Good evening. This is the 71st regular meeting of your Baltimore City Council, the 73rd term. At this time, the meeting is called to order. As a reminder to all folks who are joining us tonight, please ensure that all your electronic devices are turned off. If they're not turned off, at a minimum, they are placed on silent so you do not disrupt today's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Reverend George Hopkins of Baltimoreans United in Leadership Development, better known as Build. It is our pleasure to welcome you, Reverend Hopkins. The floor is yours.
Dear God, we ask that you would give us all sight to see our city clearly, that we may see the work that needs to be done by those in leadership in this room. We ask that you also would give a vision that allow us to dream boldly of the city that we can become. We ask that you would give us the same sentiment that we feel for our sports team, that anyone that wants to be a champion has to come through Baltimore. May the work done here build a city that anyone who wants to thrive must come through Baltimore. May it be to the benefit and the glory of you and the people who you have created throughout this city. Amen.
Amen. The council appreciates that, particularly, anyone that wants to be a champion must come through Baltimore. At this time, please state the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our showcase this evening, we have the Department of Public Works as well as Department of Transportation. They're going to do a weather-related update for us, just so Baltimoreans will know what to expect from the administration this winter. Madam Director, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, Council President and Councilwoman. You got it. Thank you very much. And all the council members here today, thank you for giving us this time to give you an overview of our winter operations. So, as you may be aware, DOT functions as the incident commander. Even though we're dealing with winter right now, we have been diligently working since June on the city's preparedness. And we coordinate with OEM as well as other city agencies to support all of these events. So, when it comes to our pre-storm event preparation, our DOT team as well as OEM are diligently monitoring all of our weather. We have reports coming in through the Maryland, the National Weather Service, AccuWeather, and NOAA. As the incident commander, we provide guidance to all the different agencies. Only agencies we don't provide guidance to would be OEM, MTA, and the Health Department. But otherwise, all the other city agencies, we coordinate with them and provide direction on our responsiveness. Office support and snow removal services are provided both by DGS, DOT, of course, Wrexham Parks, DPW. And we work with DGS for any type of vehicle repairs. We are current, although we've completed all of our PMs, we continue to address all of our vehicles because we are using them on a daily operations basis. So, if there's any repairs or anything necessary, we coordinate with DGS on that. We also coordinate with any of our utility partners for any, if there's any type of weather event that would lead to power outages and things. So, we have BGE included on a lot of those calls. We also put out proactive communications to the public to let them know what type of storm to expect and what type of precautions they should take. And then we coordinate internally with all the city staff and our contractors to let them know what type of anticipated deployment they can expect. And I'll get into more of that later on. And forgive me, I'm coming off of having laryngitis, so my voice is a little suspect sometimes. So, as far as our operations, we are divided up into, of course, the city sectors. And within each sector, we have the different agencies represented. So, for example, Sector 2 in the northwest area, you can see where that's primarily DOT, whereas in the purple region is the DPW solid waste. So, that way, we're aware of who is responsible for that area. If we see any concerns or issues, we directly coordinate with that staff and the teams that are working diligently in those areas. Within those different zones, we have what's called our primary zones and our secondary zones. So, a primary zone is going to be more of those major roadways, major routes, more of those like state-designated type of roadways. And then the secondary roadway is going to be more of your local community streets, the smaller streets. And so, whenever we do our winter operations, we always start with the major roadways, the major gateways, those primary routes, and then we get to the secondary routes. We both use our city resources and our contractor resources. Depending on the type and size of the event, sometimes it might just be the city deployment, other times it might be contractor resources. And so, we divide them up accordingly based on the resources that are available during that event. And this is just another example of Sector 3 and Sector 4, primary and secondary routes and those snow zones. This explains our snow deployment tiers. So, if we expect some type of a light dusting, maybe some potential freezing spots here and there, we do what's called skeleton crews. Those might be there for an actual event that's going to be very minimal, or it could be that we keep skeleton crews after an event to address any of those potential icy conditions. And then you have more of that internal crew deployment. So, if you have a event that might be one to two, three inches or so of snow, then we might look towards just using the internal city resources. And so, that's going to be all of the agency's full force, everyone who's responding to winter operations. When we get into those larger events, or events that are going to last for a longer period of time, then that's where we look to bringing in our contractor resources as well. So, we'll have the city resources and those contractors, and they all have designated assigned areas and routes they're supposed to work on. One of the questions we get a lot of times is about brine treatment. That is like a special saltwater mixture that we apply to the road to help to change the temperature at which the water or the snow would freeze on the roadway. So, the key to that is if it's supposed to start out as a snow event, then we're going to brine. If it's going to start out with potentially rain, then we're not, because all that's going to happen is the rain will wash the brine away right into the bay, right into our harbor. So, we want to try to be mindful of the winter operations needs as well as our environmental needs, and so we're very careful with that. So, just because someone might see lines out there in the county elsewhere, it might be that their area will start with snow, but our area might start with rain. This is a sample breakdown of our equipment availability. And I say sample just because we have a certain number of pieces of equipment, but on any given day, those numbers can fluctuate based on things, vehicles that are in the shop. So, we, can you go back? So, in addition to all of our different city agencies, which is broken down there, we also have the contractor support. So, there's 275 pieces of city equipment, 439 of our contractor equipment, and we can pull on those when needed for the deployments. We are structured in a team-type of environment. So, we have what's called Shift A and Shift B. Shift A, when activated, they report at 12:00 a.m. and they work a 12-hour shift until 12:00 p.m. B shift will report at 12:00 p.m. and work until midnight. And so, we have designated staff, people who are in charge of each of those shifts. And so, everyone throughout the entire city knows who to go to and coordinate with during that time. And then, one of the things they'll be working with, so I showed you those earlier maps, as each shift is working, they monitor the progress that's going on, and we have snow pass counts or maps that we use to monitor. And so, this is the older example, so just note, you know, we put a certain date in there, but that's not an actual date from this actual event or anything. But where you see the gray, it's saying that there haven't been passes there yet. Where you see yellow, it's saying there's one pass. Where there's two passes, that's the blue. And where there's the purple, there's three passes. And we actually use this as a training event for our staff to ensure that they recognize differences and possible concerns. For example, where you see the purple, if that area has three passes and other areas do not, we want to shift and redeploy those resources to the other surrounding areas to balance out the attention. So, again, this is not an actual event, but it was used for training purposes. We are structured to do remote operations. This got implemented during the pandemic. So, we have our virtual dashboard and other communications and teams and the soft phones to be able to support this. This allows us to keep people in their potential home environments or other office locations without having to be on the roads and traverse the roadways, but we're still able to be productive and make sure we're managing these events. This is an example of our snow operations dashboard. There are key links there on the left-hand side, which gets you to like the BGE outage maps, the primary and secondary zone pass maps and other things. We're able to monitor kind of in real time, semi-real time, like they're putting the reports in. So, once the contractor's finished certain passes, they're reporting that into the admin staff, and then that gets updated in our GIS mapping. But that's what we use to monitor what's going on. In the bottom right corner, it says a 3-1-1 request. That's where we are monitoring any of those service requests that come in for icy locations, and the team is working on prioritizing and deploying resources to those areas. And then the other box, of course, is just the current weather conditions. The only other thing to add is, again, although we are structured to do the virtual operations, we will activate the emergency operations center as needed. It could be because of the extreme temperatures, it could be because there's ice, or the amount of snow. So, there's different reasons why the EOC might be activated. This is more of a zoomed-in map of, you know, how we would monitor if there were icy conditions. I did pull this, so there weren't enlisted at the time, but if there were some icy condition maps, you would see the little blue kind of snowflakes all over the map. Salt boxes. So, we have a GIS salt box map online that can be monitored. We have them throughout areas throughout the city. They are primarily in locations where the roadways are maybe too narrow or steep for some of the plow trucks to access. So, the salt in those boxes are supposed to be used for the roadways. The salt for the roadways is much more intense and damaging, so please don't put that on sidewalks. But those are strategically located throughout the city. If you see where the salt box has been depleted, you can go into 3-1-1 and submit the salt box concern to request that to be refilled. We are very active in our communications. We routinely send out the press release. We have the winter readiness videos on the website, and then we send out different notices via social media, talking about the temperatures, what to expect, icy sidewalks, and different conditions people can expect or can experience. And we have that in various different languages as well. And we tend to prepare a schedule, so there might be something safer at noon that says stay up to date, and then it says we're ready, and then it talks about no parking in the emergency snow routes, and we keep sending that messaging out throughout the event. Here are some of the praise reports that we got in the recent event about a job well done, people being very impressed with the city of Baltimore and the snowy roads. In fact, we even got shout-outs from the NFL Network because of how great the roads were with the playoff game. So, we're consistently monitoring our communications and sending updates, and anytime the communication team gets any posting of an issue, then they're also relaying that to the team as well for us to address it. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Lynn, interim director, Department of Public Works. Thank you, Council President Mosby, Honorable City Council, for this opportunity to present to you all. As you also mentioned, too, it's not on the slide, but DPW, like Director Johnson had posted in the map, we're responsible for the southwest quadrant of the city. We have about 33 routes that are, that our crews manage directly. It's about a third of those are solid waste staff, and then the other third is water and wastewater staff that are, that come in and assist on any of those operations. Our staff did a tremendous job in working and coordinating with DOT, so I just want to thank DOT Director Johnson, her team, for some outstanding leadership over the past week as we came in and assisted and worked together to manage the roadways and making sure that those are clear for our residents here in Baltimore City. In terms of the, what the snow had as an impact over our Bureau of Solid Waste Operations, all of last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, our routine services staff were on a two-hour delay before we sent them out. And that was mostly because they usually arrive at 5:00 a.m. to start their shifts, which is still dark outside. So, we wanted to make sure that they had ample lights to be able to go and see the roadways as they went and completed their routes. Immediately, once we came in and assessed there on Tuesday, January 16th, we recognized that street sweeping was going to be impacted for the entire week, so we did send out that notification. So, you'll see there on the slide that street sweeping was canceled all of last week, Tuesday through Friday. Our property management team, those are staff that go out and address vacant properties within the city, they were brought in throughout last week to go and help and assist our routine services staff. So, for those of you that are not aware, about 60% of our routes, whether it's trash or recycling within Baltimore City, are primarily alleyway pickups. And so, we do have narrower trucks that are able to fit through alleyways, but in an event like we had last week, we really do need the residents and the public's help in making sure that those alleyways are clear for us so that we can get our trucks safely down those roadways, so that there's no impacts to both our staff, the vehicles, and then the property that's within those alleys. And so, we had staff that was coming out and helping us clear problematic alleys that we were discovering on some of our routes, and that helped us be able to complete as many routes as possible. So, we did have impacts overall from Tuesday through Thursday, and so you'll see the summaries there. So, on Tuesday, we had about 10 mixed refuse routes and two recycling routes that were partially impacted. So, I say partially because crews were able to address the majority of those routes, but unfortunately, they weren't able to get to some certain blocks, mostly due to the icy road conditions, primarily that we were experiencing in the alleyways. On Wednesday, we had about eight mixed refuse routes and two recycling routes that were partially impacted. And then on Thursday, we also had eight mixed refuse and four recycling routes that were partially impacted. The communications and advisements to the public that we experienced all of last week was encouraging them to call and report those missed pickups to us through 3-1-1. That helped us better monitor all of the areas that our staffs were noting in their reports in terms of which roadways and which blocks were not able to service last week. And then as well, we were encouraging residents to leave their bins, whether it was a trash or recycling bin on the curb, so that our crews can come in the following day to see if we can pick those up. So, even though we had routes that were canceled or partially canceled for Tuesday, we were sending crews out the following day to reassess those areas and do our best to go and pick up those collections as best as possible. Friday, we had another snow event. Early in the morning, we recognized that the snow was actually going to be higher than what we originally anticipated, and I believe around 7:00 a.m. that morning, we did have to make the call that routine services for Friday was going to be canceled. Immediately, what we did there is start planning ahead for what we could do in terms of a makeup schedule, noting that Friday services were going to be canceled for both trash and recycling pickups. So, what we devised is, on Saturday, we brought in a skeletal crew to come in and address all of the missed pickups that we experienced between those Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday dates. And so, that's what that team on Saturday came in and aggressively addressed, as well as you could see, street sweeping has been canceled throughout this entire week. But thankfully, on Saturday, what we experienced is our eastern division, our eastern part of the city, we were able to completely catch up on anything that we had missed throughout the week. And then on the western division, we did complete about 80% of the backlog because some of those routes were still inaccessible due to the icy conditions. As well, on Friday, we sent out notifications to the public, and I want to thank the council as well for helping share those information out about our staff coming out and addressing missed pickups on Saturday, and that for anybody who had a normally scheduled trash or recycling pickup on Friday, January 19th that we had to cancel, that our staff would be out today, Monday, January 22nd, addressing all of those canceled routes. As well, where staff are currently still out addressing the backlog in the western division that we noted there on Saturday, and then any remaining SRS that we captured in the system, there potentially might have been one or two missed pickups individually throughout the entire city, and so our staff is out there today completing those SRS to making sure that we're caught up so that tomorrow, which is our normal start of the week for routine services, we can hit the ground running. As well, street sweeping was canceled today. Essentially, what we'll be doing is assessing that each day, so our goal is to make that determination the night before so we can appropriately move staff around to help and service, or help and pick up some of the extra load on routine services. We anticipate with the warming weather this week that we'll be able to get back to street sweeping once the, once the roads are a little bit more clear. These are just two examples of what our staff was experiencing over the past two weeks. As you can tell, very heavy snowfall and icy conditions in the alleyways. In those certain cases, our staff did the best job they could to document those, report those back into us so that we're fully aware and that we can document it and then know to send staff out the following day. Finally, just some capturing of social media posts or our communications, so just getting the word out through our regular channels, social media channels on our city website. Again, I want to thank the city council as well, too. I did see a lot of sharing of our information over the past few days, both from DPW and DOT, so I really thank the city council and the public for helping us get that information out. Again, if anybody had a missed pickup, whether it was the past few days or today, please report those over to 3-1-1. Those get assessed into our system, and then we're able to go back out and address those missed pickups. It's not on the slide, but as well, too, I want to mention, because we do have water and wastewater operations for this week, typically, what you experience after a hard freeze like we just had is that you will see an uptick in terms of water main breaks or exterior leaks. Please, if you see any water that's in the roadways, please call 3-1-1. All of that information gets categorized and sent over to our crews, and we'll go send out the appropriate crews to go and assist, but you likely will see an uptick more in SRS, our service requests for water main breaks during this week as conditions start to thaw out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam and Mr. Director, for a very thorough presentation. We thought that it was important with the last storm and potential other snowstorms this winter to just kind of go over the plan with the citizens of Baltimore and let them know how to better. In touch with us in case there are any questions or concerns related to the procedures. With that, we're going to go on a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we'll proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the January 8th, 2024, regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. At this time, you can find bill signed by the mayor on page 2 of tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could please go into executive nominations.
EA24-0219, Bernadette Barnes, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 11.
This nomination has been assigned to exec, to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0220, Dr. Iyuma Imnuga, Member, Health Commissioner, District 13.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0221, Tian Harrison, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 12.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0222, Isaiah Lawrence, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 12.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0223, Aubrey Levy, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 13.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0224, Lamar Willis Martin, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 12.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0225, Dante Morel, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 12.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0226, Caleb Morgan, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 10.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0227, Tristan Seale, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 11.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0228, Tika Torres Bolivar, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 1.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0229, Trey Moore Wilson, Member, Baltimore City, LGBTQ Commission, District 9.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0230, Andaria Harmon, Director, Office of Older Adults Affair and Advocacy, District 10.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Now, we'll turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 24-0481, Revenue Obligations, Wastewater Projects. For the purpose of increasing the city's authorization to issue revenue obligations within the maximum aggregate principal amount of the revenue obligations authorized and calculated as of June 30th of each year by the city to finance or refinance wastewater facilities and in that connection amending and restating ordinance 02-332 as amended by ordinance 07-421, 11-430, and 14-293, authorizing the Board of Finances to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, approve, and amend the form, terms, provisions, manner, or method of issuing and selling, the time or times of issuance, and all other details of the revenue obligations, and any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of these revenue obligations, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the issuance and payment of revenue obligations. Sponsored, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This, and administration.
And administration, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0482, Revenue Obligations, Water Projects. For the purpose of increasing the city's authorization to issue revenue obligations within the maximum aggregate principal amount of the revenue obligations that may be outstanding, authorized and calculated as of June 30th of each year by the city to finance or refinance water facilities, and in that connection amending and restating ordinance 02-331 as amended by ordinance 04-687, 07-420, 11-429, and 14-292, authorizing the Board of Finances to specify, prescribe, determine, provide for, approve, and amend the form, terms, provisions, manner, or method of issuing and selling, the time or times of issuance, and all other details of the revenue obligations as any other matters necessary or desirable in connection with authorization, issuance, sale, and payment of these revenue obligations, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating the issuance and payment of revenue obligations. Sponsored, City Council President and the administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0483, Revenue Obligations, Stormwater Projects, Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount. For the purpose of increasing the maximum aggregate principal amount of the revenue obligations that may be outstanding as of June 30th of each year, under ordinance 18-174 as amended by the city to finance or refinance stormwater facilities, and in that connection amending and restating sections of ordinance 18-174, and providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the issuance and payment of revenue obligations. Sponsored, City Council President and Administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0484, In-Rem Foreclosure, Nuisance Property. For the purpose of authorizing certain nuisance property located in Baltimore City to be subject to a certain in-rim foreclosure process, requiring certain procedures for an in-rim foreclosure, requiring the city to take certain actions to compensate the interested parties in property that is acquired through an in-rim foreclosure, specifying the circumstances under which an in-rim foreclosure judgment may be reopened, making conforming changes, defining certain terms, and generally relating to an in-rim foreclosure of nuisance of property in Baltimore City. Sponsored, Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's time the body will recognize sponsors of the bill. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This bill, we are going to be calling In-Rim 2.0. The initial bill, the initial version of In-Rim, which we call 1.0, allows the city to foreclose and take possession of a vacant and abandoned property or vacant lot if the liens exceed the assessed value of a vacant property. And the version you see before you today would allow the city to foreclose when the liens are below the value of a vacant property or a lot, and as long as they are also not current. So, as you know, we have over 13,000 vacant and abandoned properties with several hundred thousands of lots, several thousands of lots, and the city only owns about 1,000 of these properties, so they're almost all privately owned. And it is not possible, and we own about half of the vacant lots, it is not possible to have a whole block strategy for renovating and addressing vacant properties when these properties are scattered across the city. So, the first thing to do is to acquire these properties from these private owners. So, I will give you an example for two neighborhoods in my district with a total of 455 vacant properties. 28% are currently eligible for In-Rim 1, when the leads exceed the value of the property. And 56% of the privately owned lots are also eligible for In-Rim 1. These properties have liens higher than the assessed value of the property. In In-Rim 2, under this bill, it will allow the city to foreclose on vacant and abandoned properties or lots when the liens are in arrears and below the value of the property. The city would have to pay the difference between the value and the liens in these cases. In my district, out of those 455 vacant properties, 35% of the vacant properties and 14% of the vacant lots would fall under In-Rim 2.0. This means with the full complement of the In-Rim This means with the full complement of the In-Rim tools, the city could acquire almost 65% of the vacant properties in those two neighborhoods in my district, making them available for renovation. Many of them are on the same blocks to really work hard on that whole block solution. This also means in those two neighborhoods, 80% of the vacant lots can be acquired and made available for redevelopment, community gardens, community farms, and more. And I would imagine that the percentages are very similar to many of our other districts. Unlike tactile receivership, vacant properties that go through the In-Rim process do not need to be auctioned off to the highest bidder. The city can make the properties available to partners who have relationships with the community or community members themselves to help rebuild our neighborhoods. I want to thank our state delegation for passing legislation that allows us to do In-Rim 1 and In-Rim 2, 2.0, excuse me. And I look forward to working with all of you and Mr. President and the administration on the passage of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. I see the hand raised of Chairman Stokes, as well as Councilman Burnett, Chairman Conway, Councilman Cohen, Madam VP, Councilman Bullock. Thank you. Again, this bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could go to the next bill.
City Council Bill 24-0485, Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Bill. For the purpose of clarifying a definition under Article 13, Subtitle 6, opportunity to purchase, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored Ramos.
This bill is assigned to ECD. The body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. We recently passed the Mary Pat Clark Opportunity to Purchase Bill. This bill is a correction of a little tiny typo that we found, and there will be no other changes to the content. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, this bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, if we could go into resolutions now.
City Council Resolution 24-0209R, informational hearing examining Baltimore's bike infrastructure. For the purpose of inviting representatives of the Baltimore City Department of Transportation, the Maryland Department of Transportation, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Parking Authority of Baltimore City, the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, the Baltimore City Public School System, Bike More, community leaders, local business owners, and other interested parties to discuss, one, the process of developing new bike infrastructure, two, the rationale for investing in bike infrastructure and its relationship to larger public transport infrastructure needs and goals, three, how to achieve greater neighborhood engagement from private citizens and business owners, and four, strategic planning of new infrastructure for all communities, including updated funding models and consideration of public safety ramifications of existing and proposed infrastructure before developing new bike infrastructure. Sponsored, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The body would like to recognize Madam VP. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, the previous bill, I just want to make sure that we, and I'm talking to the council services, add it to, in one of the bills that we already have zoning and ordinances, and we can get that piece corrected right away. That you, the previous bill. Okay. So, today, I'm really excited to introduce an informational hearing that will bring together community members to address concerns and gather feedback on the strategic placement of bike lanes. Rather than adding bike lanes that could be infeasible or pose safety concerns for pedestrians, drivers, and bikers, we want to create a win-win solution for everyone involved. Let me be clear, this hearing is not an attempt to undermine complete streets ordinance. We know that that is a law. Rather, it is an opportunity to listen and address the concerns and safety discussions related to the installation of bike lanes, both present and future. As a representative, it is my duty to consider the opinions and feelings of all parties involved, including our constituents in our diverse neighborhoods, whether in favor or against bike lanes. Ultimately, our priority is to prioritize the well-being of our citizens and communities. And again, this is nothing against the ordinance or the manual. We haven't had a discussion as a whole about this in a very long time, and I'm sure all of us get calls throughout different parts of our district with these concerns. So, this is just the informational hearing. It's, as I said before, it's not to take away what's in place, but we need to bring all these parties together and really have a strong dialogue because truly, there's been a lack of discommunication. The engagement process of communicating with our neighborhoods has, has really not been successful. So, it's time to really sit down and have that dialogue, and I look forward to scheduling, the scheduling of the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam VP. This bill's been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next resolution.
City Council Resolution 24-0210R, Request for City and State Action, Establish a State-City Partnership Park at Gwynne's Falls-Lekland Park. For the purpose of calling on all relevant city-state and nonprofit partners to collaborate on the creation and management of the state-city partnership to enhance and maintain Gwynne's Falls/Lekland Park. Sponsored Burnett.
At this time, body would like to recognize sponsors of the bill. Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. The passage of the Maryland Great Outdoors Act in 2022 by the Maryland General Assembly recognized the growing popularity of public parks and earmarked significant new state funds for the operation, maintenance, and capital improvements of state parks and Baltimore City Parks and Recreation. New law, the new law associated additional funding, allocated additional funding to support city-state partnerships, and Gwynne's Falls Park is a thousand-acre park, which is in need of significant repairs and investment. A partnership park would marshal the strengths and resources of both state and city to advance public access to this nationally recognized park, providing public health benefits, improve public safety, and conservation jobs for youth in Baltimore City. I've been working on this with the friends of Gwynne's Falls Park and the 41st District, and so we're looking for a resolution from the council to support this new partnership. So, with that, Mr. President, I was trying to move to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Councilman. Real quick, I would just like to point that there aren't any state parks in the city of Baltimore, which is a very unique relationship. You know, many major cities have a relationship with their state as it relates to state parks. Inside Baltimore has some amazing parks, but this is something that the council definitely looks forward to supporting you and taking you up. With that, without objection, we'll suspend the rules. Hearing and seeing none, Councilman.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for immediate adoption of the resolution.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved and probably second, those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The consent calendar has now been approved. We'll now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill 23-0407, Zoning, Discontinuance or Abandonment of Nonconforming Use Reporting.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Council and VP, Chair of the Committee and VP of the Council, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Bill number 23-0407, correct?
Yep, 0407.
This bill was heard on January 9th, 2024. It was voted favorable as amended. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments as favorable.
It's been moved and probably second, those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The amendments are adopted. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
And then I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill moves forward as amended. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
EA23-0214, Paige T. Davis, Jr., CFA, Member, Fire and Police Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, District 1.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on January 18th to consider these five executive appointments, and we're recommending them all favorable. So, I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second, those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
EA23-0216, Jay Morgan Grove, Ph.D., Member, Commission on Sustainability, District 5.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This item is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0217, Ebony M. Thompson, City Solicitor, Department of Law, District 8.
At this time, body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer.
Yeah, move it first.
He seconded it.
He tried to second it before I moved it.
Oh, yeah. They're so excited.
Point of order, I'll move this nomination favorable.
Yeah. It's been moved.
Sir.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. One second, please.
Ah, we did. Yeah. Go back. Thank you.
Madam Solicitor, if you could please stand. You're able to hang out with us a little longer if you would like, but if not, congratulations.
I'm gonna sit here back.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next one.
EA23-0215, Philip Costa, MBA, CVP, Member, Commission on Sustainability, District 11.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This item is approved. Madam Clerk.
EA24-0218, William T. Thomas, Member, Fair Election Fund Commission, District 3.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee.
I move the nomination favorable.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The recommendation for confirmation is now accepted. We'll now turn to committee announcements. Cheers. If you have any announcements, please raise your hand real quickly. Any announcements? First, we're going to go to Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. First, I would like to move to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a hearing.
Without any objection, we'll suspend the Rule 10-2 to announce a hearing. Hearing and seeing none. Floor is yours, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. So, on Thursday, January 20th.
Hold on one second, Ms. Chair. Ms. Trueheart, we want to recognize you. Ms. Trueheart, you going to run out without us recognizing you?
No.
The, 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 the city, the city council wanted to recognize your presence. Well, thank you. Happy New Year. We just wanted to say hi.
You want to say happy birthday to the council.
Uh-oh, yeah. Well, make, make sure you return back. Thank you, Ms. Trueheart.
My parents are not even talking.
Mr. Chair?
Perfect. Great seeing you, man. So, on Thursday, January 25th at 2:59 PM, the committee will be hearing a City Council Bill 230477, Supplemental General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of General Services. We will also be having a hearing now for Thursday, February 15th, 2024, at 3:00 PM, and that will be quarterly budget briefings. That's at 3:00 PM. And then Thursday, February 15th, we're changing the timing of a hearing. So, the time will change from 3:00 to 3:05 PM, and that's going to be Bill 210062R, and that is American Rescue Plan, ARPA. And then we'll be having on Thursday, March 14th at 3:00 PM, we will have an agency briefing for the Department of Public Works Bureau of Water and Wastewater. Thank you very much.
Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing on Resolution 23-0210R, informational hearing, Medical Waste Incinerators, on Wednesday, March 20th, 2024, at 10:00 AM. The hearing will be held in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will hear Bill 23-0419, a study and report of the North Franklin Road closure at the request of Councilman Burnett on Wednesday, February 28th at 1:00 PM. The committee will also hear Bill 24-0480, Motor Fuel, Motor Fuel Credit Price Signage on Wednesday, February 28th, 2024, at 1:01 PM. And the committee will hear LO 22-0030, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Violence Prevention on the following dates, all at 1:00 PM. So, February 14th, 2024, April 10th, 2024, July 10th, 2024, September 11th, 2024, and October 9th, 2024, all at 1:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Are there any additional committee announcements? Madam VP, the floor is yours.
I have some hearing cancellations, so the, and a list of new hearings. The Economic and Community Development Committee will, will be canceling the hearings for the following bills on January 23rd, 2024, which is tomorrow. That's Bill Number 22-0205, Vacant Structures Emergency Response Fee, 22-0206, Vacant Structures Registration Fees and Penalties, 22-0225, Vacant Structures Nuisance Abatement Penalty. These bills will be rescheduled at a later date. And then we're going to hear the following bills. Bill Number 24-0474 will be heard on February 13th, 2024, at 1:59 PM, and that is a acquisition of property, Block 600, I mean, I'm sorry, 6990, lots 1 to 7, and Block 6991, lots 1 to 26, and the bed of Woodhouse Avenue. Also, 20, Bill Number 23-0435 will be heard on February 20th, 2024, at 2:00 PM, and that is the zoning code modifications. Bill Number 23-0350 will be heard on February 27th at 2:00 PM, and that's rezoning of 420 North Haven Street. Bill Number 23-0443 will be heard on February 27th, 2024, at 2:01 PM, and that is the rezoning of 3500 West Forest Park Avenue. Bill Number 23-0351 will also be heard on February 27th, 2024, at 2:02 PM, and that's rezoning of 1801 to 1807 Bloomingdale Road and 1800 to 1816 North Rosedale Street. Also, Bill Number 23-0437 on February 27th, 2024, at 2:03 PM, and that's zoning conditional use conversion of a single family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, and that's 1600 South Charles Street. And Bill Number 23-0430 will be heard on March 5th, 2024, at 2:00 PM, and that's the rezoning of 2527 Georgetown Road. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam VP. There aren't any additional committee announcements. There is. There is one. Committee will hold this Wednesday, the 24th, at 3:00 PM. This will be LO 240055, School Safety and At-Risk Youth Placement. You know, with some of the recent heinous and very concerning incidents that have taken place in our school system over the past couple of months, we would like to bring out the school police, the school CEO and administration, as well, as well as Baltimore Police Department and the SAO's office to talk about strategies and solutions. We've also reached out to the Department of Juvenile Services. Obviously, they are not a city agency and are not required to come and participate. We would absolutely love that they come to participate. This is not an opportunity for us to blame anyone or any breakdown, but really try to get to solutions of a problem that we're seeing all too often happen in our schools. With that, we're going to go to regular announcements. Are there any additional regular announcements? Chairman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This Saturday, the 27th of January, our office will be hosting what we've been calling a senior symposium, also known as the Older Adult Resource Fair. We do recognize that the language has changed. But again, we want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for more of our seasoned residents. So again, it's going to be Saturday, the 27th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that's going to be the Bonza Core Community Resource Center at 31 South Payson Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any additional regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. I would like to announce two favorite birthdays for this month for the council, and that is Councilwoman Odette Ramos. Your birthday is tomorrow, is that right? It's Thursday, okay, I'm sorry about that. As well as Councilwoman Felicia Porter. Now, your birthday is tomorrow, is that right? So if we could please give a round of applause. There was a time where the council gave out small trinkets for birthdays, but as you guys could recall, that like everything else, that was the hottest thing on the news the next day. And whomever gave it to the news, we decided not to do them anymore. But happy, happy birthday, all right? Are there any additional announcements? That being said, at this time, we'd like to recognize our amazing VP. The floor is yours.
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, January 29th, 2014, at 5:00 PM. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the 11 victims of homicide this year. And also adding Ernie Greco. He was the longtime president of the Metropolitan Baltimore AFL-CIO. He retired in 2017, and he passed away a couple weeks ago. So prayers to his family.
Thank you. There being no new business before the dust, this will conclude the 71st meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we absolutely love you.